Counsel, work session to the order for June 8, 2021. And I'll ask the clerk, please call her on.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Dr. Lee? Dr. Lee?
She's muted, I believe.
She's saying here, but I can't hear her.
Mr. Reynolds? Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Dr. Lee, can you hear us? We can't hear you.
Dr. Lee, we can see your mouth moving, but we just can't hear anything. Give him an... You're working on him, Mr. Griffin, trying to get her cash in here?
I think he's actually on her end.
Scott, she can hear.
She gonna log back in again and see if we can hear then.
So we'll pin that right there with just waiting on her. Still can't hear you.
Volume's turned down.
Is your volume on, Dr. Lee? Did she?
She locked it back out, I think.
Man, that camera shows my ball head, doesn't it?
Ms. Walden, I feel like you without my papers.
Mr. Jordan or Mr. Griffin, I don't know which one of y'all are gonna give it the jacket tonight, but I believe I'm on you.
Yeah, 'cause I'm comfortable.
Well, I'm not.
Long sleeve and a kind of...
Me too.
Greetings, everyone.
Oh, okay, well, we can go ahead and... Do we need to run back down the list? Okay, since we have Mr. Reynolds here.
Just mark, he's marked present.
Okay, so you're marking present, okay. So we do have a quorum present. Dr. Lee, we'll get her back in to the meeting as soon as we can get some sound from her. At this time, we're gonna go ahead to the mayor's comments. I have a couple of things that I need to go over tonight. First and foremost, let me state that the... I don't know if you all... Most of y'all didn't get the voting ballot for Officers of GMA's 2021-22 session. And so when Art Tiffany called me back or emailed me, and I called her back in reference to it, I don't think most of you all either didn't get it or whatever, but we were at the wire. So I asked Mr. Griffin to print it up, check it off, and send it back in and stamp my name to it, and he did. So that's how the ballot box got checked from the City of Millisville this year, because normally, I have never done it. So I don't know, I thought everybody was doing it individually, but I learned it was, should've been a city collective thing. And how the votes got in from City of Millisville, I guess we never sent one in for the last three years up until this year. So that, I wanted to bring that to you all's attention. And was that last Monday? We sent that back in, but had, it was supposed to be in by...
Tuesday, June 1st.
June 1st. It was supposed to be in by June 1st, and Art Tiffany called in reference to it. So I wanted to make sure I brought that to everyone's attention. I don't know, Dr. Lee, did you get it? You didn't get it either? Can you hear me? Yeah, she... We still can't hear you. I think she was trying to say something.
Maybe calling, 'cause she called you?
Can you call in on your phone, Dr. Lee, too?
She's doing it. So we'll get her response to that as soon as she calls in.
Hey.
Hey, I don't know what's going on. But when I was on this board, only one person...
Can you put on speaker, Mr. Griffin?
Okay, hold on just a minute. Hey, Dr. Lee, can you pull up the Zoom numbers and call in one of those, and that way you'll come in over the computer? Thank you.
Okay, so while we're waiting on her to call, we can come back to that. The other thing is, the fireworks. I got Mr. Griffin in reference to it, because I started getting calls, and I actually had tried to call him starting last Friday. And for whatever reason, the calls got missed and we didn't get each other. And I think it might've been Sunday that we spoke in reference to it. And he stated he thought that counsel had voted no to have this.
Counsel did not vote no. Melba sent you an email today stating that counsel...
About to read it now, okay. So in an inquiry and asking Mr. Griffin and Ms. Melba about it, counsel did not vote no, but you were sent an email in reference to it to respond to Mr. Griffin. You did, you would've wanted to ask counsel to respond to you, right?
No, Melba asked counsel to respond to her.
Okay, asking you all to respond to Melba. This was brought up at our February 24th council meeting. And at that time, as I shared with Mr. Griffin, I thought I distinctly heard everyone on counsel stating to put it off until we knew how things were going to fare out from the COVID pandemic. So in this response, it says, "Ms. Melba, I agree with the executive staff that it's too early. This is my reply to make that call. I also believe that possibly later this summer might be a better time if we're not hit with another round of virus." Dr. Lee said at that point she agreed. And remember, we lead by example. And Ms. Shinholster said, "I have to agree that it is still too early to say right now unless we can restrict everyone to their seat, on or in their cars, and not mingle. Probably impossible." Via phone, they said Mr. Chambers said no. So, but during that meeting, I thought Mr. Chambers was one of the ones that said, "That's a little too early. We needed to look a little further down the line as well." And she did not receive a response from Mr. Mullins, Mr. Reynolds, or Ms. Walden. So that's why it's important that we make sure we follow up with these emails or call back and let people know what's on your mind, because we do have constituents wondering if we're gonna have it. It's too late. We can't have it now, because the contract that we have to sign and with Melba being able to get in touch with the people to make sure they can do it less than 30 days out is impossible. So please, make sure we're looking at our emails and responding, because, you know, I hate to have to call people back. I shared with them that, you know, I'll ask tonight, again, at the meeting. But I'm gonna have to make some phone calls to return to people to say no.
I remember it being brought up, and... But I knew it's too late to try to do it before, because we had, it was a time limit that we had to have it done by.
We had to, we had to have the contract sent in, I think it was by March 15th.
Exactly.
Or drop it if we had not sent it. We had sent it in after March 15th, we would've been locked in to the money, whether we would've been able to have it or not, so.
Exactly.
And that's the point I'm making, Mr. Griffin, is that we gotta communicate. I mean, we dropped the ball there, because we weren't able to get the country... Our thoughts back to you or Melba, whoever it should've went to, to say, you know, "It's looking like a possibility," because everybody's moving, you know? We can't stay in a stalemate area, but we gotta move with the times. And most people are moving around anyway. You know, they're out and about, whether or not you're out and about or not. They are almost, those that are vaccinated are feeling more comfortable, and they're moving about our city and everywhere else. So let's try to remember that and make sure we get back with the necessary persons. Dr. Francis from Georgia College, I asked Ms. Lester to put a community needs assessment in everybody's box. I met with them on last week, and I also spoke with Mr. Griffin. What they are wanting to talk to us about is the work that he's doing in the community and his staff that he has on board right now in reference to blighted areas and some other things that they want to talk about. So what I shared with him at that time was that the month of June has been delegated to budget discussions. And so what I would do would get with Mr. Griffin and ask that he try to get them on the agenda for July as soon as possible. And then that way, we all can kind of get the same front-end information and some good information. I think it might be helpful for some, and some it might not be. But yeah, and still, let's be open to it and allow them to come. As well as, I haven't had a chance to speak with Mr. Griffin today. Melinda Sylvester also is in the same line of work, come down from Atlanta. So I want to try to make sure both of them are here at the same time, and that way we're doing that one shot, okay?
Okay, well, we can schedule them for the July 27th work session. We've got the public hearing for, the second public hearing for broadband ready on the 13th scheduled for that work session, but we'll get them on the 27th.
27, okay.
And if you'll give, if you'll give... I have his contact information. If you'll give me Ms. Sylvester's contact information, I'll coordinate with them.
Okay, okay. I also had Ms. Melba to put a retirement invitation in everybody's box. They will be giving Mayor Phil Best a retirement party on June 17th at the DeBose Porter Center in Dublin. And it's from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. I know Ms. Denise said she would probably go, so I'm already giving our RSVP. If you want to attend, please go ahead and let them know that you will be coming that night. I asked what it is that Mr. Best would like the most, and y'all are gonna laugh at this, he said a mule. So we can send some donations into Mayor Best to help purchase that mule. So I don't know what that was. A mule, yeah. I guess he said he's had enough of us. He needs to take it to the outside and make sure he can get it all together. The other thing that, you know, I want us to really consider, because as I have been fortunate enough to talk to the different mayors around our state, it's been really helpful for me. And I know I've brought up the integrated system of us making sure we look at how we can best serve our citizens. We looked at the fact that it's pricey, but then we have our own media specialist right here on this council that helps me out a whole lot, and I'm so thankful for Mr. Reynolds that could possibly get with Mr. Griffin. And we look at that. I was talking to Mayor Van in Savannah, and he was saying it reduced their calls tremendously, just in the city of Savannah and some other areas that are small like we are. But the reduction of calls just coming into the city, because they had gotten that system up to par so that people could call in. So please, let's think about that and look at how we can make that happen with the expertise of Mr. Reynolds here. He's really, really good with it. Let me remind everyone that the ordinance that is in place for allowing the mask covering, the Zoom media for counsel, the opening backup of City Hall, am I correct, Mr. Griffin, will expire June 30th?
That's correct.
And either we're gonna extend it or we're just gonna let it expire. So, you know, I think he has reached out to us numerous of times. Hold on, Ms. Dudley. We'll get you. We've, I think he stated that he's reached out to us via email and some conversation, because I know he's talked to me several times on it. So, you know, that's something we gotta put in our front mindset. Dr. Lee was trying to say something. We still can't hear you, Dr. Lee.
You got your phone muted, Dr. Lee?
Something going on.
Talk into your phone, 'cause she called in.
Yeah, I see your number now.
Uh, it is. Oh, maybe not. Not getting anything from the speaker test, are you, Mike?
No.
Let's see.
It could be, very well be in the system, because I share, you know, my system at home. If the weather's bad or something outside, you know, where she said in her house.
Is the direct box still plugged in there?
Yep, it is. Change your speaker. Let's test that and see.
That's what I had it before.
Audio cable all the way plugged in? I hear it.
I heard something just saying... Did you hear?
Audio's going through.
Yep, I hear the board at all.
Freezing.
There we go.
That's what happens when I sit down so late.
Was it you, Bo?
Next alarm clock, we got pulled out.
This electronics can mess up, it's me.
It's you. Well, you're gonna have to move, man.
Tell me how far you want to go. I think it was us, Dr. Lee. Talk to us now.
She didn't give up on you, did she?
I saw that little music. I think she disconnected her phone now. She's just on the... Dr. Lee, can you hear us?
Lee is connecting to audio. That's what it says.
Hey, log back in from your computer, because I think it was on our end. All right. Log back in on your computer that you originally logged in on, because we have an audio issue on our side. And we'll keep you on the phone till you do that, because it looks like you logged in on your phone now, are you? Okay, yeah, just close that connection and then log back in on your computer.
It is humid outside. Sticky.
Sticky.
We don't have a strong wind, so we're... Thank you, Walter.
That must've been looking in while... Just a little while, just a little while.
My son, he's over there.
I'm with you, Boo. I'll keep the air on as long as they can stand it, but they can't stand it no more.
We got Mayor Coke.
I know, right?
You get float, uh... Get some city of Millisville blankets. I am about to freeze him.
I'll just work that into the old budget request.
All right, can you all hear me now?
We can. We'll hang up the song, thank you.
Welcome to the meeting, Dr. Lee.
All right, turn this on. Thank you, thank you. I just realized she was a long ranger up there.
Dr. Lee, you can go back to, if you want to talk about the voting ballot, and then come back down to what I left off with.
I don't even remember what I... I wanted to say. It wasn't no good, whatever it was.
Your voice matters, yes, ma'am. So are you good with that? No, you were raising your hand, so we were talking about the...
Oh, the reason why I'm raising my hand for that is so we can get an extension on the, with the Zoom meeting. Oh, just say it.
No, ma'am, we didn't.
We did not.
Okay, okay.
If we extend it, we'll need to have it on a resolution on the June 22nd meeting, because it will expire on the 30th.
Can it be extended?
I'm saying with the governor.
Yeah, with him having...
Since the governor opened everything up.
The governor, the governor's state of emergency is actually still in effect, based on his last, on his last executive order, so.
Till when?
Till when?
Till June 30th.
That's what I'm saying, to June 30th. So, Mr. Jordan, you want to give us some expertise on this? And we can take it right off?
We'll take a look at it. But extending it beyond June 30th is probably going to depend on what the governor does. There is another way for counsel to declare a state of emergency. But that state of emergency, basically, the way it's written, can only go from, basically, I think, 14 days at a time.
And then he put a clause in there to prevent city government from going around what he already has?
That state of emergency can't be the pandemic anymore, though.
Yeah, I thought I got something in there.
Well, I mean, that would be up to y'all, but it would... It may become a stretch from that time. And depending on what you're... If you're basically saying that you won't still allow the meetings to be via Zoom for those that choose to do that, that, you know, that probably can continue for some relatively short period of time, depending on what the governor does. But there are a lot of things that we, that were in that, in our original state of emergency that we're not going to be able to do based on even what the governor's current state of emergency authorizes and prevents local governments from interfering. But I think we'll have to see on June the 30th what... If he lifts it entirely or if he reimpose it. But I could see a scenario where if we've got council folks that are uncomfortable coming to meetings because of COVID, we can probably, as you as a body, can probably address that. But you're going to be hard-pressed to do much, much more. And I'm not even sure how long you can effectively do that.
Well, the charter allows, the charter allows so many teleconference attendances per year, I believe. I think it's, is it a maximum of four?
The open meetings law.
Right, has some bearing on that as well.
Has, has some allocations for teleconferencing. And that's in part what we utilized in our, utilized in your state emergency resolution. But there are certain restrictions. You know, you can use it, I think it's a couple of times a year, basically, at your, as elected official, it's your option to use it more than that. And then you can only do, like I said, you can only do that. I think it's two times within a period. But there, and I'll look it up here and just say, there is a provision relative to if someone is... Is, I don't know if sick is the right word, but if somebody is unable to attend a meeting, a series of meetings, based on some kind of health issue, then that can be implemented. I think it requires some kind of physician's statement, which obviously, in COVID, would not be, would not be difficult for anyone to obtain.
Sure.
I'll look at that in just a few minutes.
Question, would that be actual COVID or just fear? I mean, you know what I'm saying?
No, I thought, well, I think it would be whatever your doctor was willing to do.
Smooth, Mr. Jordan.
These days, probably, anyone feeling the need to do that probably could get that doctor's excuse.
I know, we have, we have a situation where the governor has opened everything back up, but then turned around and told us as secure facilities, "You can't be open," because of the fact that, you know, it applies to everything else as far as business-wise and everything. But as far as coming into the facility, you can't, you can't be open.
Really?
So, you know, that's one exception to his own rule that he had to go back and do. But I don't know how that applies to meetings or anything like that. That applies to people coming and going.
That's interesting.
So then, Dr. Lee, and counsel, if y'all want to, let's just table that to see.
Yeah, let him look into it.
See, let Mr. Jordan look into it, Dr. Lee, and see how we can...
Yeah, I think I'm seeing.
There's a lot of moving parts to all that, but we have to make sure we're...
Okay. And then the last thing I have on my to-do list tonight is, I failed to do something last meeting, is to wish our very own councilwoman, Shinholster, a very happy, happy birthday. A late birthday had that, but she's looking so beautiful and radiant, so I know she's still celebrating. So happy, happy birthday to you, Dr... I'm about to say Dr. Shinholster. So I think I've taken up enough time. Budget discussions, when you're ready, Mr....
I am, I just have a few, a few comments, not necessarily about this specific budget process, but I shared with you all on Friday, I think it was, via email, information on the American Rescue Plan Act, where we were in that process. Just today, the mayor received the terms... the mayor received the terms and conditions for um for that, and uh I have printed those off and I'll be reviewing them. Shay will be reviewing them. Mr. Jordan will be reviewing them um to uh make sure that um uh we can meet the requirements uh in order to be able to receive those funds. When we uh when we did that for the CARES Act, OPB required a resolution. OPB has not said anything about a resolution for ARPA funds at this point in time, but uh things with OPB and with Treasury are changing daily on that, so it may mean that we may need to come back and get a resolution approved on the the twenty second. Um Ms. Danzy did tell me that uh when the auditors um last came through that they asked for a copy of the resolution that was used to um approve the mayor signing the terms and conditions of the CARES Act. But that may have been because that was required by OPB on it. Uh but um I've al- I've also posed that question to Ruci Patel at at GMA uh and waiting to hear back from him. I suspect if that's if if GMA feels like that's going to be a concern, they they will put a draft resolution out there for us to use as they did with the CARES Act. So uh we are getting a a little bit closer. Uh we have done everything up to this point. Once the mayor signs the terms and conditions, we will have done everything we can up to that point. Um it's my understanding OPB has thirty days from the time that they get the funds to turn them back around to the cities, to the cities, unless they ask Treasury for a thirty day extension, which they can do. So uh maybe sixty days before we start receiving any of those funds, but um we anticipate we'll get half of that total um that's available to us uh sometime during this um during this calendar year. Uh the only other thing I had was in in the course of our conversation uh last Tuesday night, uh I shared with y'all that I would uh uh send you all a copy of the org chart for Public Works. I did that and included in there the vacant positions as well as where any new positions or where the new positions that Mr. Thomas had initially requested uh would fall. Um so you have that information uh before you now, and I'll be happy to answer any any questions that uh that you have for that. I did mention also in the email that uh there was some potential thought around possibly some changes with some utility maintenance people and water and sewer people that uh might provide some assistance in the central garage that then may may make a position there be at least partially responsible for the facilities maintenance individual that Mr. Thomas had asked for. We we have not had both of this department heads together to talk about that with uh with days off, with it being summer at this point in time, but I anticipate we probably will have that be able to have that conversation uh and see how they feel about that uh by the end of this week, and I can share that information with y'all, but if I I know Mr. Chambers was very interested in the facility maintenance position. But unfortunately, I won't know how that's going to shake out until probably towards the end of of the week. I've had conversations with the two department heads, but I haven't had conversations with them together um to see if we could to see if we could work that out. We did um uh lastly, uh Mr. DeNoosa and Mr. Jordan uh did get the uh two required ads in the Union Recorder. They started running last Saturday, the required ads necessary for uh the increase in uh mayor and council uh compensation and also the increase in um pension uh for mayor and council. So both of those ads started running Saturday, so they will have had the opportunity to run for three days or three Saturdays uh before, three weeks before uh June twenty second. Uh Bo has sent the uh ad to the Union Recorder um stating that uh at this point in time, we plan to pass a budget on June twenty second, so if you all think that is not going to happen, we need to probably make that decision tonight so we can pull that ad because that ad has to run for at least a week beforehand. Is that correct, Bo? So um so it will need to actually run, it'll need to actually run this Saturday in order to meet that week requirement, and it'll be a week and few days uh by June twenty second, so. Did I miss anything there on that ad? Uh Ms. Danzy has made the changes in the entries of the budget uh that uh you all had had approved so far in terms of the reduction in insurance. The uh the approval, the verbal approval of the compensation increase. Um and um but we just simply haven't printed those back out for y'all until all the changes are made to keep from trying to kill quite so many trees. So with that, Mayor, I'll answer any questions that anybody has, so.
Counselor?
I would just request a a digital copy to be sent to my email, whatever the most recent copy is. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
The uh the the we did print one with the changes in it so far to make sure that Bo had one on display uh downstairs, so that that one is on display for the public.
What what were you saying, Mr.? No, I was agreeing with Walter that we need to see a copy of it to um digitally if if you all aren't going to print print it out.
Well, I I I wanted to see if y'all had any changes tonight, and if you did, we'd make those changes and then print it out and get a hard copy to you and an electronic copy to you if if you'd like to have one.
Well, the thing about it is is that I I feel like, I don't know, and and I'm just speaking for me. I I I feel like we're 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 talking generically as a whole about a whole lot of things, but that we haven't accomplished items individually in this budget process. Does anybody else feel like that besides me? I mean, I'm just wondering, normally, we go through so many different things, but I just feel like a lot of things have we haven't haven't accomplished um to to be able to say, okay, so we've made this decision, we can check that off. We've made this decision and we can check that off. We've been trying different things, but we haven't said, okay, this is what we'll do. Um that's just the way I feel. I I'm just kind of frustrated a little bit about.
The one question that I had was about all the overtime with the fire department, but you explained all of that uh last week, so.
I'm just talking about the individual things that we're talking about doing with the departments. Did we come with, you know, with that with that whole list? Did we come up with concrete decisions on each one of those items?
Well, we come up with the fact that we wasn't going to have a planner.
Right, right. And that's what I'm saying is it's just.
Get away with.
A few things that we've checked off, but there's there were so many more on there that I feel like we just haven't said, you know, we're going to do this or we're going to do that. And I'm just speaking for myself now. I just don't feel.
I I'm still in question too about the.
Good about, I mean, because I I know that to me, there's some some things that we need to discuss that's on this list that we really need to have a closed session for.
And and I, Ms. Denise, I I also reached out to Mr. Jordan in reference to that, the day that we there's some things we need to probably discuss a little bit more in closed session that we haven't been discussing, and so he said we could.
And normally during during the budget process, that's, you know, we we have some closed sessions where we can discuss things, and we just haven't done that. And then um um I I think that, you know, I well, I know that during the budget processes, if we're going to rename some positions, redo some things, we had discussed that earlier, and then we put it out to to the budget process. Then we haven't really discussed that because that involves individuals. You you know, so the tho- those are the types of things that we we need to have a closed session because everything is 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 has been here, it's been televised, and and you just, we can only beat around the bush so much till we have to talk about certain things, and then we're going to have to go into a closed session to discuss it, and and I, you know, that needs to be done, in my opinion.
I think things were a little more streamlined this time around too, so, you know, where we were so used to highlighting and pulling out, uh Ms. Danzy has done a really good job.
She's done a fantastic job, but I'm just, you know, going down this list, just there's some things that need to be talked about, and there there are individuals that are involved in some of it.
Go ahead, Dr. Lee.
If we need to have a closed session, can we have one on fifteenth next Tuesday?
Will that give us time?
For for me, you can. I mean, that's.
With the advertisement, it's still good.
We can we can advertise it in the morning for a call work session.
No, I'm talking about the other advertisement you were saying, the one that Bo.
Well, if 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 we meet on the fifteenth and have everything ironed out by then, then the twenty second advertisement will be fine. But if we do not, then we would need to pull that advertisement.
If we need to have, and we can see we can have other meetings, we can.
Right. I I I mean, we and and we've already dedicated Tuesdays in June to to make this done anyway. We all know that when it's budget time, we just have to give up that time, and if there's any other thing that we need to have a.
I just keep my two Tuesdays open anyway.
And we and there there have been years in the past where things were still being decided on the budget and the work session before it was passed in the council meeting.
Right.
So so I I think we still have the potential to meet the twenty second deadline, especially if we have a a meeting on the fifteenth.
I agree.
So so Dr. Lee was asking for next Tuesday night, the fifteenth?
The fifteenth.
The fifteenth, okay.
I I have a question about this um Public Works org chart.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I see, I I mean, I I and the question is, and maybe Mervin can answer this, these vacant positions, because I know when we talk about wanting to add positions, and then you look at something, and then there's vacant positions that aren't even filled, but then they say they need more help. Then maybe if they get the 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 already allocated positions filled first, maybe then we won't need to add two more positions because we're adding two positions in a row where you got two vacancies. So, yeah, I can understand you need more help if you already have two vacancies there. And and I I guess I'm just trying to figure that out. There's another one where you have two vacancies, and then you add you want to add two new laborers to that, so how long has these vacant positions been vacant that need filling first before we add anymore?
I I believe Mr. Thomas made his initial request before these positions came vacant, but I'll have I'll have to go back and look and see if that's the case. So he was asking for additional positions while those were were filled. Um but the same thing occurred to me when when I was putting these vacant positions on this org chart that that, you know, you've got you've got a laborer in stormwater, you've got a street maintenance worker in streets and sidewalks, and that's two of the the you're asking for two positions in there. So maybe you approve one position, fill that vacancy, and sees what happens, see what happens.
Where you are then, yeah, because you you I see you got an equipment operator, and then, like you said, you have a um a street maintenance worker, and then you want two more street maintenance workers. And I I I guess I'm just trying to make sense out of all of it with with these vacancies, because over here in cemetery and parks, although you didn't ask for anybody, you have two vacancies there, two, three vacancies there as well.
I can, I'll I'll get with Mervin and send you all information on how long those positions have been vacant. I I don't I don't know right off the top of my head, my head.
Would she not know she said her?
I don't know that you would know right off the top of your head, would you? So, yeah. But we can find that out and certainly let you know that early in the morning tomorrow morning. So in a closed session would be good because there there I was planning to ask for one on the twenty second to talk about a situation that we can discuss on the fifteenth as well, so.
Okay, yeah, just let me know about that because that that'll make a big difference in 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 his staff, because I, you know, if you yeah, if you've got that many vacancies, we need to worry about filling what we have first before we add some more to it.
And and I want to add with the cemeteries and parks, like I mentioned last week, the two supervisors, and we have one vacancy, why we just not not hiring anybody for that position that is vacant, since we already have a supervisor?
So just cut back to one supervisor in cemetery and parks and then have two crew leaders under the one supervisor?
I mean, that's just my thought.
Okay.
Because the crew leaders are very much like supervisors, right?
That that is correct. They are they are the leaders of the crew that they are out with.
And see, if you did that, then then in Public Works, that would give you an opening with less salary to fund one of these other positions.
It would.
So that those are types of things that we need to look at and see if we can work something out. And then I see you have the facilities maintenance worker there. You just stuck it out there in a box, not really attached to anything.
The ones that I put in red um are the are if would be where the new positions fail if they were approved. Uh I just didn't I didn't bother straining my eyes to try to get a little line.
And I'm not even thinking about the line. I'm thinking about Steve not really wanting that to be just attached to that department. He wanted it.
Well, and 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 they would be they would be responsible for facilities maintenance in all the city facilities, so you know, we could talk about it being in that department. We could talk about it being in in buildings and grounds. I don't know that you have the supervisor in buildings and grounds that would be necessary uh for that role, so it 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 kind of falls there because that at this point in time, that's the.
Wouldn't that be the supervisor? For buildings and grounds?
I I would say I would say not.
Okay, just a question.
Well, I mean, you said last week, I think, because of what uh it all entails, that person would not say, make them just a supervisor.
Say again, I'm sorry.
The facility maintenance person last week, didn't you say something about not making that person the overall supervisor because it entails a whole lot more stuff that might be contracted out or something you said last week? Something to that effect, I thought.
It it would deal with all facilities within the city, not not just not just what's going on at Central Garage. It it has fallen there just simply because from from a mechanical supervisory standpoint, that's probably where it best fits, but it may, there may be some other areas that it could fit in, so. Right now, right now, Carrie is Carrie is the only person in buildings and grounds, correct? Uh and she is supervised by Charlotte in the business office. Nothing against Charlotte, but Charlotte would not have the mechanical ability to supervise a facility maintenance person. Uh so, you know, if we put them in buildings and grounds, we would have to find a supervisor for them, so.
Okay. Well, since we're going to have a closed session to talk about employees, I know know that um on your list last time, we put the capital improvement plan, but we never really talked about any of that as far as um budget. I was looking at the vehicles for the police department and uh we we haven't really, we we kind of skipping around that and and didn't really talk about it, so um.
Well, and and I think that's, I I don't think, I know we, that's because we're trying to see where we're going to be with SLOSS, and I think we're going to be okay on SLOSS to start doing some 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 CIP work. But um, you know, the 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 police, the police got ten new vehicles with two thousand twelve SLOSS, so we've covered a little part of that. Um he's a that department is about to have to replace um body cams and radios, so that's going to be a major CIP piece. And uh I I don't think we're going to have any choice but to replace the radios because of what the county's doing with the radio system there.
But are we going to include that in this budget?
I would I would not include that in this specific budget because we don't have finalized figures on that yet. What I would what I would prefer to do is come back and amend the budget once we get our third SLOSS allocation, which I anticipate we'll have in the next thirty days, and then we know where that can come from.
Okay, because he's he's got, he's got a lot. Because he's, he's got, he's got a lot. They both have a lot.
They, they do.
On these sheets, and that's why I said I didn't want to just, you know, go through the budget and, and then not, you know, if there's something that we need to include, not take a look at it, because.
I mean, we can certainly put those figures that Chief Swiker supplied in the budget, but those, those are very much just estimates. There's no quotes associated with those at this point in time.
Same thing with the fire department. I mean, they're asking for a lot, too. Are you all looking at what I'm looking at?
Which page are you on?
It's, it's on, it's on the back of the, the one that we received, May 10th, on the back of the allocated positions. You got a cap, City of Millersville Capital Improvement Plan, and then you have the police and the fire. You have the one.
Yeah, yeah.
And the, the, the fire on the last page is actually what, what was allocated to them from 2012 SLOSS. So.
All of that, because I was getting ready to say.
All of that was from 2012 SLOSS. You, you do not have a, you do not have a capital allocation.
For the fire department?
For the fire department in the, in the information that you have.
But didn't he include something in his request?
That's what I'm pulling now to see.
It's up on May 21st, Mr. Denise, you live near the 27th. Which one is it?
The paper, the, the one that he sent on May 10th. As the allocated positions and then the capital improvement plan.
He is, he is showing capital improvement plan requests, the biggest of which is working to set aside $100,000 per fiscal year for a new 105, 110-foot tower ladder truck. But every, and then setting aside $10,000 a year for turnout gear replacement.
Okay. No, I have that somewhere here.
Excuse me, he's actually setting aside turnout gear replacement from general funds. So the, the only thing that he has for FY '22, which is the budget that we're working on now, is the $100,000 set aside for the tower ladder, and he is requesting that come out of SLOSS.
Right.
So on that last page, on the one that you're talking about, Ms. Yenolsen, from the tent, the last page is what the police department and the fire department did with their 2012 SLOSS. And then you see the police department on the next to the last page, capital improvement plan, based on the anticipation of SLOSS beginning in FY '18, but obviously that did not happen.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm looking at, their, their mobile laptops and vehicles. So you said their, their body cam communication.
Body cam and, and radios are the two things that he's talked to me about that are the, the most pressing at this point in time.
Are they just updating their body cams?
They are getting, they are getting new body cams that have greater storage capacity. Right, right now, they're having to come in during a shift and download the information off the, off the body cams. And also, the company is no longer providing maintenance for those particular body cams because of their age. So he is replacing the body cams to, in, to be able to have a new maintenance contract and also to be able to have a longer storage time on the data.
Okay, and on, on the mobile laptops, that's just upgrading the laptops that they already have in their vehicles?
That is correct.
So did we do any of those since the FY '18 SLOSS? Do we, have we done any of that?
None of this has been funded from, from SLOSS because we did not start receiving it till FY '21. Yeah, I think, I think we're going to be able to place some catch-up. Not 100% catch-up, but I think we'll be able to place some catch-up. But a lot of that's going to be based on how that SLOSS comes in. If y'all remember me mentioning, we are about to get our third allocation of SLOSS from the county based on collections. And then because of the way the law and our agreement reads that, that there will be a need for principal to, or reserve to accrue to be able to pay the next bond, we will not get, we most likely will not get another SLOSS payment from the county until October based on the spreadsheet that Ms. Hudson and I have been. Now, I, I just looked at allocat, at collections for, for April and May, and the, the April and May collections were really, really good. So she and I are going to have, we have to have a discussion about what that does to her reserve.
I know, but June, July, and August are going to be.
I, I hope so, yeah. I fully anticipate, but the, the April ones, I couldn't believe how much better they were than what we, than what we had estimated. So that's a good, that's a good situation. So what I'm hoping that means is that it builds up the reserve faster so that we can get some of that back. But they pay, they pay principal and interest in January and interest only in July, Jimmy, is that right, I think? So once, so once they make the interest payment in July and send us our last allocation payment from the April allocation, April collections, then that reserve has to build back up until they can, until it gets to the point where they can pay us again. And right now, the spreadsheet that we're working off of, that shows October. But that may move up because of the collections being better than what we've estimated.
Okay, that's, that's my last question for now, because I know it's time for.
What I, what I hope we can do, just for one last comment, is what I'm hoping we can do is some things that we need, that we needed to fund with SLOSS for water and sewer, we're going to be able to spend, fund with ARPA money, and that's going to, that's going to make SLOSS stretch further.
I hope so too, honey.
All right, so, you know, make sure you get all your questions and concerns together for the next meeting. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the work, the council work session. Motion to adjourn. Yeah, Mr. DeNoosa.
And we will schedule call work session for the 15th at 5:30. Good with everybody?
I think so. All right, so at this time, the meeting is adjourned.